Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order for July 15th. We'll start with a prayer. Let us pray for continued health, safety, and welfare of the residents of Jefferson City, and for the people that are entrusted to work toward these pillars of city government. While we often think about city fire and police having responsibilities for public safety, all city departments, including parks, recreation, forestry, have significant roles of providing for the health, safety, and welfare of our residents. Therefore, let us pray as a city council, we too can do our part in supporting our city departments in ways that they continue to contribute to the health, safety, welfare of our residents. Additionally, I'd like to keep in mind Councilman Graham in your prayers as he and his family are dealing with a family loss. In his name we pray.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
First, start by a real call, please.
Fitzwater.
Present.
Graham.
Present.
Hensley.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Kena.
Here.
Holovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schreiber.
Present.
Ward.
Here.
Wiseman.
Present.
Okay. I'd like to have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Back in.
Councilman.
I move to adopt the agenda with one amendment, which shifts item 13H, Bill 201932, and adds it as item 5C.
Second? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Item four miscellaneous agenda items, we'll start off with recognition of July Outstanding Employee Service Award recipient to Stacy Landwear.
And I will ask Stacy Landwear to come forward, please, and Todd Spalding, the Director of Parks Recreation and Forestry. So, we're going to recognize Stacy Landwear, City of Jefferson, Parks Recreation and Forestry, Public Maintenance Worker for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for July. Some of the information provided in the nomination include the following. Ms. Landwear provides excellent customer service on a consistent basis. Ms. Landwear shows great initiative and needs very little supervision in completing work tasks. Ms. Landwear likes to think outside the box and propose new parks improvement ideas, not only in the area of landscaping, but also in general park improvements. Ms. Landwear takes great pride in her work and strives to continuously improve the appearance to the parks and landscaping areas. Ms. Landwear is one of the hardest working Parks Division employees who wants to maximize each working day to the fullest and is never reluctant to assume difficult work projects. Ms. Landwear understands the big picture of parks and recreation. She wants to provide safe and enjoyable public park spaces for everyone, such as helping the homeless in North Jefferson City and Washington Park, not focusing only on landscaping projects. Ms. Landwear seeks out training and educational opportunities to continue to learn and gather the latest industry information, looking for the latest trends in landscaping, native plantings, and general park grounds management. Ms. Landwear is always professional in her interaction with others. Governmental buildings traditionally are designed to be spaces that can serve as a point of public pride, civic pride, and which are welcoming to the public and visually pleasing. Ms. Landwear's contributions to the visual aesthetics of the municipal campus, and thus public pride, are noticeable and significant. Ms. Landwear's attention to detail and her skill in making the grounds of municipal campus an attractive and welcoming environment are a true asset to the city and make a marked impact on making the City of Jefferson a more beautiful place to live and work. Ms. Landwear's significant contributions to the overall quality of life of the city are recognized and appreciated, so congratulations and thanks to Stacy Stanware, City of Jefferson, Parks and Recreation Forestry, Parks Maintenance Worker for receiving the City of Jefferson Outstanding Employee Service Award for 2019, for July 2019. So, please. Congratulations. You have some of your fan club here. Want to introduce them?
I have my in-laws, my children, my husband, and my father with me.
Well, great, well, welcome, and certainly one of the superstars, so we thank you for all of your work.
Thank you.
Todd, thank you as well.
Very good. I have something for you, but you know, you're getting rewarded by being an outstanding employee, so we send you to a council meeting at night. But, I've discovered that we have something for you that may, in a small way, compensate you for the outstanding work, and I do notice the grounds of City Hall are fabulous. The new edging is really, looks terrific, and I don't know who's responsible, but pass the word. And since you have a fan club here, you ought to have a picture with your fan club in front of the logo and as counsel behind you. Yes, sir, we got a Councilman, Councilman Fitzwater.
Well, I was just going to make comment, were you working out putting the mulch around?
Yes.
Because I left the meeting here and I complimented you before, I said, there's nothing like fresh mulch, so thank you very much. City Hall looks very good.
All right.
Got it. Thanks.
Famous letters, a kiss of death. Okay, next on our agenda, we have Joyce Swinging and Rita Kempner, Promoting Counsel for Drug-Free Youth. Would you come up to the podium?
Well, while the microphone's still up, I'll just say thank you for allowing us this opportunity to speak before the council.
Good. Well, good evening, City Council members and audience, I am Rita Kempker. Most of you know me from Capital Region Medical Foundation, and I'm just so pleased to be here tonight. I'm wearing two hats this night, I've got my Capital Region hat on and I've got my CDFY hat on. I've got my CDFY hat on because we are promoting our new signature event, which is Over the Edge. How many of y'all heard of Over the Edge? It used to be a Special Olympics event, but they handed over the bungee cords to CDFY, so this is the first time out of the gate this year.
They're ropes, not bungee cords.
The ropes, or whatever they do. Okay.
I promise you, we're not bungee jumping.
Okay. So, this event is scheduled for October 26th during Red Ribbon Week, and it's off of the Jefferson City, the Jefferson State Office Building. So, the CDFY Board thinks this is a very great event that gives us an enhanced platform, or rooftop, to reinforce and support our mission, which is to motivate, educate, and collaborate to promote drug-free lifestyles among youth in mid-Missouri. So, I've got my CRMC hat on because we have seen an increase in substance use, disease, and behavioral health issues at CRMC, both inpatient and outpatient, in youths eight through 18 over the past year. I think this is even more critical at this point of time in our community, because we have had several disasters recently, tornado, flood, and we know from Joplin that, there's a 30-page report on it from the Missouri Department of Mental Health, that behavioral health issues rise after disasters. And, we know that we will now have substance use and behavioral health issues arise due to another controlled substance being introduced in our community, medical marijuana. I wish we could kick the can down the road until our community has time to heal, but, back to my CDFY hat, a wonderful part of Over the Edge for CDFY will be the opportunity for local organizations, competitions such as law enforcement, police, highway patrol, sheriff, and others, to identify an individual or individuals to go over the edge to raise awareness and funds for CDFY. CDFY is also working on a prize for the agency group who raises the most money. So, listen, every day we ask our youth to make positive and scary decisions to say no to drugs and alcohol. Look, when they do that, they take the chance that they could be excluded from certain groups, they could be bullied, they could have a hate page made about them, many, many things. So, if we as edgers can step out of our comfort zone, or off of a building, then kids will see that and will hopefully model that behavior by being brave and having courage to remain drug and alcohol free. And so, listen to this special deal, the typical entry fee is $85, but you can sign up through this month for $50. The $50 is applied to the minimum $1,000 that needs to be raised by each edger. I raised my $1,000 in less than a week, it was absolutely no problem. So, how about it Jefferson City Council members, who will join me in the challenge of being an edger for the kiddos in our community?
Well, I'll let you pass these out to everyone. Well, actually, we have had another person generously donate for their stand-in. Mayor Turgeon donated the $50 so that Rick will go over the edge, and he's looking at me going, yes, yes.
I was told it was off of City Hall.
It's a little bit higher than that, but that's okay. You got this, we're going to have a lot of fun, it's going to be a great event, we've got all kinds of other community partners coming.
Chief, I'm going to do ladders and other things apparel, both chiefs, 911. I think that it's interesting that the mayor had chosen to put that on me while I have the county commissioner in the building at the same time.
Well, guess what? He already passed the buck. He'll tell you all about that. He paid for one of his commissioners to go over the edge already to do the same thing. So, she was just following suit, that's all. Thank you very much, though, we really appreciate you guys again.
Thank you for what you do for our community.
Thank you.
I'm sure we'll have lots of sign-ups from this group.
Yeah. Awesome.
Let me wipe a bit of sweat off my brows as we go to the next item. We're having the proclamation for Parks and Recreation Month. This seems harmless enough. So, invite to the podium. Well, welcome.
We have a special presenter with us. Do you want to tell them your name?
Say, I'm Hayden.
I'm Hayden.
All right.
Thank you for having us. Every July is National Park and Recreation Month, which is something that is put on through the National Park and Recreation, or National Recreation and Park Association, and every year they provide a theme. This year's theme is Game On, and we took a cue out of Jeff City Blog. Hannah Freevert, who is also an Environmental Quality Commission member, is a contributor to the blog. Last month, she wrote about 50 Things to Do in Jefferson City. So, we took that and turned it into a social media photo contest to celebrate National Park and Recreation Month. So, each week, we ask people to post a picture of them using Jefferson City parks to show us how, what kind of fun that they have in the parks, and that makes them eligible to win a prize each week. So far, we've given away Week One, a bike, a Trek bike, which was valued at $450, which was graciously donated by Ashley with Healthy Schools, Healthy Communities. And today, we drew to give away two tickets to the Slip Slide and Play Event that will be at Riverside Park this weekend, as well as a Fitbit Flex, also courtesy of Healthy Schools, Healthy Communities. So, it's been a great partnership, and we have two more weeks of fun giveaways. Next week, we'll be giving away two tickets to Silver Dollar City, and in the last week, our two tickets to the Cards vs. Reds game on August 31st. So, we appreciate everybody using JC Parks, and we hope that they help us celebrate. Do you have anything to give to that?
The only other thing I want to say is, obviously, I hold our parks in high esteem, but also to get out there and get active in general, but don't forget about our spin scooters and spin bikes. So, that's all I needed to share.
Well, I have a proclamation here that I will read. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities, whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important in establishing and maintaining the quality of our life in our communities, and whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, and whereas the parks and recreation programs increase communities' economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of a local tax base, increased tourism and attraction and retention of business and crime prevention, and whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality and protect groundwater, and whereas our parks and natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community, and whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the City of Jefferson recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources. Therefore, Mayor Kerry Turgeon, City of Jefferson, State of Missouri, do hereby proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month. Game on.
All right.
Rick, we also have, if I may, a couple of our commissioners in here, maybe for the photo op would be great, to have Brad, former President Chris Lycle, our current president, too. Thank you, I'm glad you reminded me. Have them come up, and you as well, as we get our picture.
Say hello. He comes by naturally.
I'm going down the road with your car.
All right, you get Hayden, though, so.
Heartbreaks are all for families, it's all staying with me on the family, but I'm afraid.
If that was a bill of blair, we're as the most expensive photo ever taken in City Hall. Okay, item four D. I was expecting Fred Bird, but this was going to be my highlight, so we're going to invite up Commissioner Sam Bushman and company for announcement on the Springfield Cardinals' Cole County Day.
Wait a minute, it's got to be a chief.
Did we share the cost on that, county, city?
Did we share the cost on that, county, city?
But just so you know, I did pay for Jeff Helscher to go over the edge. I paid for $50, so. I figure, you know, if Jeff can do that, you can do it with your eyes closed.
Yeah.
That's probably the only way I would do it.
Rope's $10 extra.
Oh. Rope, he doesn't need a rope. Fire chiefs, you know, the old days with the big ring. Okay, anyway, I have come tonight bearing gifts, and we want to invite everybody to the Cole County Day at the Springfield Cardinals on Saturday, August 10th, 2019. It's a 6-10 game, we have a tailgate for the game courtesy of Lieutenant Governor Keough, Senator Bernscheder, Representatives Veat and Griffith, and then myself, so you can have a good tailgate, you'll get another ball cap from the Cardinals, and then the giveaway that night is a Lubrock bobblehead. So, for, if you want to ride on my bus, which is a luxury motor coach, and you can bring your own refreshments, it's $60 a person. If you want to drive and just meet us at the tailgate, it's $20, and that's the game, or the tailgate, the ball cap, and the game. And so, this is our biggest United Way campaign fundraiser, so we'd like to invite everybody from Jefferson City, because they're part of Cole County, too, to join us. And you won't have to jump off any buildings.
Well, thank you for the invite, and the hats are fabulous, so I think it deserves a picture.
I think we need a selfie.
This is a selfie free zone, I can't do it like the mayor, so.
Ryan can take a selfie of us.
Okay, but we can, as council, come on, go ahead and have your entourage, as many people as you can muster, it will.
I don't know.
Mark, don't mess up your hair with him.
Yeah, I won't, I'll try not to. Trying to be taking pictures himself.
Hey, Hal.
What?
Come on, Hal.
Where's Sam's head?
Whole people, whole people got to get all the money they can get.
Not the twin studios.
Okay. We have a public hearing for an amendment to Chapter 35 of the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana facilities. Clerk, would you read the bill?
In ordinance to the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Chapter 35 of the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana dispensary facilities.
Very good. Now, we're asking for people that are in favor of it, and then we'll ask for opposed, we'll alternate until we run out of testimony, so therefore, I'd invite anybody that wants to speak in favor of this proposed change to come to the podium now.
Sunday, do the presentation.
After Sunday gives the presentation.
Thank you, I thought I got out of it. As the clerk indicated, this is a standard ordinance that would amend the text to Chapter 35 of the zoning code. Originated through staff through the Planning and Zoning Commission, a result to the constitutional amendment last year. The text amendment basically adds two types of facilities to the existing medical marijuana code that we have. One of them is a transportation facility, and one of them is a retail dispensary facility. I'll address the transportation one first. Basically, that would provide for a facility for a company that, the business is basically transporting medical marijuana. There's several restrictions on what they have to do in terms of logging and keeping track of their trips, and the types of vehicles they can use in terms of how they look, and such regulations like that. A licensed provider of other types of medical marijuana facilities can also have a transportation facility as part of it. Basically, it is going to fall in the same category as the medical marijuana cultivation, medical marijuana manufacturing, and medical marijuana testing. And the existing code on that is those can be located in the M1 or M2 light or general industrial sections of the city that are zoned like that. There's also a distance requirement from schools, daycares, and churches, which basically is 1,000 feet measured by foot, being lawfully traveled by foot. With that, I'd like to move on to the dispensary one. It's a little bit different, it is in a different zoning district than all the other marijuana facilities. This one is for the retail dispensary, like a pharmacy, this is where a patient would go and purchase the marijuana for medical use. Those dispensaries have the same distance requirement of 1,000 feet, or would have the same distance requirement of 1,000 feet by foot. Staff originally, to the Planning and Zoning Commission, recommended in the C2 district for them to be permitted. The Planning and Zoning Commission had a lengthy discussion after one citizen made comments about not, you know, the restrictions would be quite heavy anyway, and they included the C1 to the C2. I'd like to add, and I don't have it quantifiable, but the C1 district only adds a few locations, a very small area of space, to that overall area. And you can see, there's a few of them in light pink, if you would extend Wildwood down a little bit to that one square tract of land, there's one out over by where McCarty meets US 50 out that way, and there's one, I can't really see it in there, I believe it's just off of Truman, very small parcels. But like I said, it still has that requirement of being 1,000 feet away from a school, daycare, or church, lawfully traveled by foot. And it would depend on if the facility is freestanding, or if it's in a multi-unit complex such as a strip mall, and how you measure that, the details I can go into if you wish. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sunny? Okay, seeing none. Now, we'll invite any guests to come up, speak on, for this proposal. Seeing none, anybody opposed? Welcome back. You may want to state your name.
And I'm not trying to be difficult. I realize it's a very small area moving it up from the C, adding the C1 district, but anytime you add more area to, it increases access, it increases availability, and obviously, that's going to increase use by youth. And that's our biggest concern. As a city council, as a local municipality, it does say that you have the right to change some of the ordinances, there's a lot that you can't change, I understand that, it's coming, it's available in our community, but we certainly can make it as restrictive as possible to access for our children. And that's all my big concern is, as Executive Director of Council for Drug-Free Youth, that's my job, so hopefully you understand, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I'd appreciate reaching out to me, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this point in time, or at any point in time. I really feel that there are some...
And it would depend on if the facility is freestanding, or if it's in a multi-unit complex such as a strip mall, and how you measure that. The details I can go into if you wish. With that, I would be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sunny? Okay, seeing none. Now, we'll invite any guests to come up, speak on, for this proposal. Seeing none, anybody opposed? Welcome back. You may want to state your name.
And I'm not trying to be difficult. I realize it's a very small area moving it up from the C, adding the C1 district. But anytime you add more area to, it increases access, it increases availability, and obviously, that's going to increase use by youth. And that's our biggest concern. As a city council, as a local municipality, it does say that you have the right to change some of the ordinances. There's a lot that you can't change, I understand that. It's coming, it's available in our community, but we certainly can make it as restrictive as possible to access for our children. And that's all my big concern is, as Executive Director of Council for Drug Free Youth, that's my job. So hopefully, you understand, if you have any questions, comments, or concerns, I'd appreciate reaching out to me, I'd be more than happy to answer them at this point in time or at any point in time. I really feel that there are some things that some other smaller, other municipalities are doing that are restricting access, and I don't believe that we've considered some of them. And I'd be more than happy to share them. Maybe I need to attend planning and zoning more frequently, I don't know, I'm not sure exactly what I need to do. But I've made myself available the minute the law passed last December, and I would be available to any one of you to speak to any issues that you think we might be able to do to protect our children.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Fitzwater.
Are you aware of how controlled substances are scheduled in this country?
Yes, I am.
Can you kind of walk us through that process?
Well, I mean, marijuana is still Schedule I controlled substance. And so basically, what that means is that it is not, it has been determined by the DEA, the FDA, that it is, it has more restrictive properties, more endogenous properties than it does positive properties, basically, as far as use. And so if it was approved by the FDA, it would be a medicine. I mean, we could go into that all day long. I, to my, to the best of my understanding, as if it's stated by the FDA, it is not a medicine, and that is why the medicinal qualities are very, very frustrating to me. I wish we would have done it a little bit differently. Basically, FDA has determined that it is not a medicine. The DEA has determined that it should remain a Schedule I drug because it has more addictive properties, less medicinal properties, and that's why it's not legal federally. I understand that our state voters passed it as allowed in our state, and so that's what we have to do. Is that, was there any other questions that you wanted me to answer on that?
Do you know what cocaine is scheduled as?
I'm not, I think cocaine is still Schedule I. Yes, it is. Heroin is a Schedule I drug.
How about Oxycontin?
Oxycontin is a pharmaceutical, but it is also a Schedule I drug. Oh, it's, yeah, it's lower.
So it's available to patients because?
Because they can, well, because, basically because doctors can prescribe the dosage, and they can also prescribe frequency. This substance, there is no dosage, and there is no frequency. So basically, they're given a card, they can get it every single day, they can take it every single hour, every single minute of the day they can be consuming this substance. There is no dosage or frequency recommendations on this substance. Those are, those are some of our big concerns.
And it's also gone through FDA rigorous testing.
Oxycontin, but we still know that it has caused addiction, and it's caused many problems in our communities. So I'm, you know, not recommending we replace one drug with another. I'm just saying we need to be cautious, and we need to proceed with caution on all substances. And youths have a tendency to misuse substances, as we've seen with Oxycontin and Vicodin, and all of the other pharmaceutical substances that they're misusing currently.
My, my point is that, as she indicated, the voters of the state of Missouri have decided that with my impression, a lack of information, that this is going to be a medical use. So we, as a city, are required to implement policy developed by the state of Missouri. I understand that.
Correct.
Doesn't make it right, it just makes it a responsibility of us.
Right.
Appreciate folks that are on the front line. I've worked with, with them, but I've done this for several decades, working with the medical profession. I have concerns of our community. Again, I understand the people have spoken, I think it passed.
Sixty-five percent.
But I mean, in, in our county, I think it passed overwhelmingly.
Well, it was over fifty percent, it wasn't as high as it did statewide.
But it passed, and it passed here over, you know, in the mid-fifties to high fifties. So I understand the people have spoken, I just hope they understand what they've asked for. They get the positive stories out of some of the states that have implemented this. We're behind the curve, which is good. I mean, Missouri is usually, happens someplace else, and, you know, we kind of weigh. But I don't think people have seen the negative aspects that this organization has tried. Again, I'm not trying to steer counsel, state has indicated what we're gonna do, but this is not going to be the panacea that it has been, we have been led to believe. And I think we're gonna reap the consequences of it. And I appreciate groups that are working with us and are working with students, working with young people, because I think we are gonna revisit this issue for a while.
Like I said, I'm available, I'd love to talk to you about solutions, I'd love to talk to you about doing the right thing. And I understand, we've got to do what we've got to do, and we've got to move this forward, it's moving forward. But we need to be sure that we're mitigating the costs to our society as much as we possibly can. And thank you very much again for your time, I appreciate it.
Any questions?
Sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, appreciate you.
Any other persons would like to speak on this hearing? Yes. Welcome back again.
Rita Kemker again with Capital Region. And just a question, when you say a thousand feet from churches, schools, or daycares, so since we've had the tornado, and I didn't know what your, what would be determined, some of the daycares may have been destroyed, some may be re-set up in, you know, in months. And so how, how will that be if someone sets up a dispensary? Right now, there's currently no daycare within a thousand feet. But what about if someone rebuilds and puts a daycare? I didn't know how that goes on, that's just my question.
Okay, I'd ask staff and maybe a legal counsel to respond to that. And as, also, the question was asked earlier, why we expanded it to the C1, C2 combination? And you might want to give the rationale that was provided at Planning and Zoning. You could stay up there, we may have a question for you.
Thank you. First, I'll start with the C1, C2. City staff originally recommended to the Planning and Zoning Commission C2. A real estate businessperson spoke to the Planning and Zoning Commission and said that is probably going to be really too restrictive due to, and this is one thing that was discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission, is the ties that property owners may have to the federal government through their mortgage holder. A mortgage company that does business, a large bank that does business with the federal government, probably would not want their property that they have a mortgage on being doing, performing illegal activities. I'm not sure how they would enforcement, enforce that, but that was brought up as part of the discussion. C1 was brought up as adding a little bit more area to that C2 area for the dispensaries. I'm sorry, I do not have an idea of how many offices or businesses might fall into that category, but by far, C2 is the larger district. The other question in terms of distance, if I may go in a little bit more, and then Mr. Moleman can, can chime in. I'm sure he's got more detailed information on the law side. The, my understanding is the distance will be measured from a freestanding marijuana facility, from the wall to the property line, if it's a freestanding facility, from the wall, the closest wall to a church or daycare, to the property line of a freestanding church, school, or daycare. If the church, or school, or daycare is in a, let's say, a strip mall or some multi-unit facility, it would be measured from the closest wall to that facility to the entrance or exit closest to that facility. And similar type of, sort of the reverse. If the marijuana facility is in a, let's say, a strip mall, it'd be measured from the door to the property line of the school, if it is freestanding, or if it's also daycare or church is, and I use those interchangeably, if it is a, in a unit, a strip mall per se, you'd have to measure that to the entrance, and that is lawfully walking that way. The, my understanding is, it, I think the state law says, and I'll let Mr. Moleman finish my, my thought, says that when, when the location, when an application is made for that business, it's what isn't in place at that point. So in, in terms of the tornado or something like that, if a daycare's been displaced, I can envision a scenario that was brought up, that they may want to go back, but certainly, a daycare, church, or school can move into that thousand-foot distance if that establishment is already there. And I refer any more questions or answers to Mr. Moleman on that, in terms of what the law says.
Thanks. So what we will be talking about is a, oh, a displaced use or an abandoned use. Just because a building gets destroyed does not mean that the use has been abandoned or discontinued. The analysis, I think, would be similar to a non-conforming use type analysis. So it would be a highly fact-sensitive inquiry, but essentially, if there are continuing plans to return the protected use, the church, daycare, school, to that, to that property, I think we would consider it to still be a protected use that that buffer would have to conform to. If there just happened to be a daycare there, and the storm blew it down, and there's never been any indication, any further work, any, you know, they remove the advertising, they move all the stuff out, that, that there's any type of, you know, indication that it, that use has been abandoned, then we could determine that, that, that buffer would not apply. So like I said, it's highly fact-sensitive, and we'd have to take a look into whether or not someone is manifesting an intent to return to that former use. You just don't, you don't lose your use just because the building is destroyed. There has to be some sort of affirmative act or admission to show that the, that the use has been discontinued. So that, I think that'd probably be the best approach.
What was the vote at Planning and Zoning?
It was, I believe, unanimously four and zero against, eight, eight to zero.
Did that help you out?
Yes, yes. Did anybody have, did you have any questions from me, from the healthcare side of it?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Any other persons would like to testify? Counselor Fitzwater.
Yeah, and I want to preface my comments again to reiterate. I understand the people of Missouri have spoken, it's our responsibility to do what we've been instructed by the state of Missouri to help implement this. I'm not disputing that whatsoever. What our responsibility is, is a city council. Got one additional, my concern is there's going to be costs to Jefferson City. Part of that in policing. So my question is, and I've not talked to the chief, so if he's not comfortable answering, or doesn't, doesn't feel like it's appropriate, but we're adding another substance that drivers and others are going to be impaired. Is it safe to say there's going to be a cost of enforcement of this to the city? And again, if you're not prepared, you can just say, "We're not prepared," and, and, and I'm saying, because my main intent is to show there's going to be a cost to our city for enforcing this. Again, I fully am aware that we have, we have to do our responsibility to implement what has been given, and I think the citizens of the state of Missouri should have the right to say what, what they want to see within our state. But there are going to be unintended consequences for cities, counties, other municipalities across the state. And, you know, if we, if you get, I'm sure you've addressed it, but if you don't feel comfortable tonight, that is fine also. So, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Thank you. I just read a study just in the past week that indicates that we will experience some safety issues because of that law, that the streets will be less safe. One can argue that, but that was the conclusion of that study. How that's manifested, we don't know yet, and, and the degree of impact on us, and whether it will cost the city to address, you know, that increased safety issue is, is left to be determined, and of course, that would be determined by the council. But there's concern regarding that, that evolution.
I haven't officially closed the public comment period, I closed that. Any questions from council? Seeing none, we'll have a third, third grand.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, amending chapter thirty-five of the zoning code pertaining to medical marijuana dispensary facilities.
Okay, any further questions, deliberation? Otherwise, I were prepared to vote. Roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
No.
Graham? Hensley?
Abstain.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kinna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
War?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Passes. Second item on the public hearing is the approval of preliminary PUD plan for three-two-one-two, one-five Masonic Court, clerk?
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri, approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addresses, thirty-two fifteen Masonic Court.
Ask Mr. Sanders for a report.
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, this is a preliminary planned unit development plan. It originated from the property owner and has gone through the Planning and Zoning Commission. The property is located on Masonic Court, which is just south of Truman Boulevard. Up on the map, the property owner is, there's a relationship between the property on the corner of Truman Boulevard and Masonic Court, that is Rose International. They have a lot of employees, and currently, they are parking on the street cul-de-sac. And that is sort of a safety concern between the property where the planned unit development's going to be, which is a hundred-space parking lot, there is a daycare. So for the safety of the employees that would have to walk a couple hundred feet, and also for the safety of parents and children that may be using that daycare, they've decided to go ahead and build a parking lot on that lot to the south of the very end of Masonic Court. We did have one communication from a property owner regarding the development, and city staff did talk to them about it. The planned unit development is on a two-acre parcel. The parking lot is approximately eighty feet from the south property line. And then there's also, the lots on the other side have a large distance between them and their adjoining property line. The planned unit development also takes into consideration a tentatively planned greenway. They recognize that in their plan, not exactly where it may go, but if Parks and Rec ever did put a greenway in, their planned unit development identifies that as, as something that could happen on it. There is no signage associated with the plan, other than directional parking signs inside the parking lot, and currently, no si, excuse me, no lighting is also planned at this time. The city staff has recommended such things as signage and lighting would follow the commercial office zoning district. It has gone through Planning and Zoning Commission. Besides that one comment, which city staff addressed, there's been no other comments on it. And it was also passed, I believe, eight to zero by the Planning and Zoning Commission with the recommendation to approve. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open up public comment on the, the same. Excuse me.
Thank you.
Counselor Lady Ward.
Yes, what is the elevation of the land between this proposed parking lot and the homes that are there?
Roughly, there's a creek, so it dips down from sort of the north part of the lot up by the cul-de-sac, going downhill to, to the creek there, and then back up. I'm sorry, I do not know the extent of the difference in elevation or the slope. But, but it does kind of go down and back up, because there's that creek that runs pretty much along the south property line.
So is there any plans for water capture off of this concrete parking lot? I mean, do you see that the creek may overflow due to runoff and then affect these homeowners?
The, the plan does meet the city's water requirements for storm runoff, and I'd refer to Mr. Bengi on that question, Public Works addressed it at the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yeah, the, going to the elevation question, the houses that are to the south of this are probably anywhere from seventy-five to a hundred feet higher in elevation than what the parking lot is. So there's really, in terms of interaction between them and what water might come off the parking lot, there really isn't any.
Thank you.
If I may, I'm referring to the notes of the Engineering Staff Division, and a hydrodynamic separator is proposed to accommodate storm water quality for the site. I'm not sure what that means, but I'm sure Mr. Bengi can expand on that.
I'm sure. So essentially, it's, it's a system that's basically, if you were to look at it from above, it would be, look like just a regular stormwater inlet. However, inside, it basically has, you know, mechanisms that would strain out, you know, floatables, you know, whatever they, those might be, and, and particulates and such. So that, it's basically, that's what that is.
To lessen the pollution.
Correct.
Into that creek?
Right, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I'll open up the public hearing. Anybody that wants to speak in favor of this item, please come to the podium and state your name for the record, please.
I'm Brian McMillan with Central Missouri Professional Services, 2500 East McCarty Street, and I'm the engineer of record on this project, representing Rose International. And as Mr. Sanders mentioned, Rose has expanded. They've added quite a few employees, and they're having issues with finding enough parking, and so they thought this lot at the end of the cul-de-sac would be a great use for that. It's close to their facility, and it allowed them to stay in their facility. They've actually, were looking at other facilities to move to, but they've, they really like this location, and so this is a perfect use for that property and serves them well. We feel there's a great buffer between the residential properties and the, this parking lot, due to the creek and the significant trees in this area, and so I think it's a great situation of other things that could go in this area. I think it would fit the neighborhood well. And yes, we have looked at the flooding issues. Generally, the city doesn't require detention unless there's a risk of flooding or not enough capacity in the system we're dumping into, and I think this location is, meets those requirements. You know, we don't plan on putting detention in, but we do plan on cleaning the stormwater. They do plan to put, I think, some lighting. I think it was mentioned that we may not put lighting. I think just because of the remoteness of the site down there, they do want to have a little bit of security lighting because it will be in the evenings, in the wintertime. And it's, and of course, lighting technology today, everything shines down. I don't think the residents up there will even know that the lights are there. I will mention another thing. In between the time this plan was submitted and approved to plan and zoning, the Rose Internationals looked at it, and they feel that they don't really need 100 spaces, so they are going to go dial that back a little bit to, in more of the neighborhood of 50 spaces, but we're going to go ahead and approve it as is, should they need to expand in the future. But the final PUD will probably be significantly lower in the amount of parking, so. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from Mr. McMillan? Seeing none, very, thank you.
All right.
Anybody want to speak in opposition? Anybody want to speak with regard to this? Therefore, I'll close the public hearing and have the clerk do third reading.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for property addresses 3215 Masonic Court.
Any questions ready to, roll call, please.
Graham? Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kenner?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Motion passes. We've added an item as amended, Item 219-032 regarding Capitol Mall financing. Clerk?
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving various documents and actions in connection with issuance of bonds for the Capitol Mall project by the Industrial Development Authority of the city of Jefferson, Missouri.
Going to ask for public comment after our council describes this.
Thank you. So these, this ordinance approves various documents that would allow the issuance or would effectuate the issuance of bonds by the Industrial Development Authority of the city of Jefferson. The IDA met this afternoon and approved corresponding documents to allow for issuance of the bonds. Joining me here tonight is Mark Spikerman with the law firm of Gilmore &amp; Bell. Gilmore &amp; Bell is serving as bond counsel on this transaction. So with that, I will turn it over to Mark for a brief rundown of the particulars of this ordinance.
Thank you, Ryan. As the city attorney mentioned, the IDA approved its resolution this afternoon. If the city were to approve its ordinance tonight, the CI, the Community Improvement District would approve a third resolution later next week. This is on, once all three of those bodies have approved their ordinances and resolutions, the bonds could be issued. The bonds themselves are special limited obligations. They're payable only from the Community Improvement District sales tax that's already in place, the TIF revenues, the TIF is already in place, and only to the extent those revenues actually materialize. So it's based on the performance of the Capitol Mall project and its redevelopment going forward. If, if the projected revenues never materialize, there's no risk to the city. That risk is borne by the bondholders. People who purchase the bonds just don't get paid. That's the risk they take going in. This particular ordinance, it consents to the Industrial Development Authority's issuance of the bonds upon the terms described in the various documents that are attached to this ordinance. Those documents include a financing agreement. The city's obligation under that financing agreement is to turn over the TIF revenues toward the repayment of those bonds. There's also a tax compliance agreement in which the, certain covenants are made with respect to the tax-exempt nature of those bonds. There's a bond purchase agreement with Stiefel Nicholas, who's the underwriter of the bonds. Stiefel Nicholas will agree to purchase the bonds and underwrite them. And finally, there's also an offering document which Stiefel Nicholas will use to market the sale of those bonds. Happy to answer any questions?
Any questions? I see we have builder representatives here and public comment. Do you have any comment? Okay, anybody from the audience? Okay. Thank you for being here, and seeing none, I think we're ready for a roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kenner?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to appointments by the mayor, we have one appointment, Karen Bricky to the Parks Recreation Commission. All those in favor say, signify by saying aye? Oh, yes, I'll need a motion. Thank you, sir. We have motions made and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Item seven, presentations from staff consultants invited guests. The first group we have is Building Community Bridges, invited by Councilmen Hussey, Hensley, and Council Lady Ward. We'd like to invite the group up to the podium and for presentation. You may want to introduce your, the folks that are going to be speaking tonight. Thank you for your attendance.
My name is Doug Wright. I'm the founder of Building Community Bridges, and first of all, I'd like to thank y'all, and I think it's an honor to be standing before y'all. Building Community Bridges is an organization that's been formed November 2017, and it has had the pay-it-forward concept since it existed, and it had the character of love, and it must be diversified. And that's what we have been demonstrating throughout the city through the tragedy that happened. Building Community Bridges stepped up to the plate, and it's just been an honor to be able to be a part of this. It's great to give back and to be able to, to be able to set, set on and help. You know, that's what it's about, because there's a lot of people out here who need, you know, there's a lot of people out here who go, who has had a hard life, they've been through something, you know, and I'm one of them individuals, you know, so it takes, I feel it's a great honor to stand amongst y'all today, you know, to be able to tell y'all a little bit about who I am and where I come from, you know, and the struggle is real, y'all. But the group, the team that I have acquired, the people, the volunteers, the city councilman Laura Ward, Mr. Ken Hussey, Mr. John Hensley, you know, they, they, they started with them believing in me, and then they believed in me, and I believe in them. You know, it's been a pay-it-forward concept, y'all, and it works. You know, teamwork really exists, and I'm very thankful, and with that, I'm just saying.
Would you like to introduce the rest? Oh, everybody come down, speak.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lorenzo Davis. I'm president of Building Community Bridges and also athletic director of Building Community Bridges.
Hello, I'm Alicia Edwards White, and I am the executive director for Building Community Bridges. And I would also really like to give a big thank you to the community that has stepped up to the plate because it has been hard starting an organization on your own with a few friends and putting in your nickels and dimes and trying to make something grow day by day. But the tornado, even though it was something that was tragic for our city, as a community, it really brought us together, and it was very nice to see the congresspeople that came out. Laura, Ken, and John have been very supportive, and the businesses that have also came out and supported and helped, because we couldn't have, we definitely could not have done it on our own. We are all entrepreneurs, self-employed, you know, and it's hard enough making ends meet for home, but for the community center on top of that. So the support of the community to show up and show out is really appreciative. Laura had purchased a shirt from us that says, "Are you for real or are you for show?" And it hit hard for us because there's a lot of people that we've come across that say they want to do, say they're going to do, but drop the ball every time. So I still want to let you know, Ken and John, I have your t-shirts. And big thank you. Next, I'm going to introduce Gabby. She's going to say a couple words for us. She is our outreach coordinator, and she has been the one that's out there on the front lines, going to different individuals' homes, making sure they have stuff that they need, while me, Doug, and Lorenzo are holding it down on the home front, so.
Gabby?
She's lying. She's been out there, too. They've all been out there. And starting out, like they said, this is a youth organization. We're here to help the youth. We really want to empower them, help them do things that they wouldn't be able to afford to do or have access to do, or transportation. That's really our goal, is to reach them. But when the tornado and flooding hit, it was without a question, this is a need in the community, and it was awesome to see everybody step up. First off, we want to thank, once again, Laura, Ken, and John. You guys have been so selfless in all this. You guys really led by example. Not only did you guys believe in us, but you believed in what we were doing for others, and you really put your words into action. From helping tarp a roof at nine something on a Friday night with nothing but our cell phone cameras, flashlights, and yarn to tie a tarp down because we knew there was rain coming, to showing up the very next morning to what we thought, okay, we're going to tarp it right in the morning in the daylight, and next thing I know, we're building an entire roof and finishing rooms. Yeah, most of it, like Greg's Roofing, yeah, let's put that out there. But you got, like, it was stuff that you guys didn't have to do. It was people that you guys didn't even start off knowing. And, I mean, just all around with us, there's countless stories of you guys scrambling to help survivors that started out as strangers and now they're family, to all of us, just like you guys now. We can never thank you guys enough for all that, all that you've done for BCB, and what a blessing you guys have been to this city through all of this. We want to thank all the businesses, churches, organizations that helped along the way. I don't want to name anybody because then I'm going to forget somebody. So above all, we want to thank our community for stepping up. And by "our," I mean other people in this, in similar situation as ours. Like we said, a lot of us are entrepreneurs, self-employed, and have outside jobs, too. We missed work, we called in, we used sickly, all this stuff, whatever we had to do to be out there to help, because that's, we knew that was our calling, that's what we needed to do. On top of it, Alicia and Doug, that are self-employed, were in the building, where they couldn't leave. They didn't have a choice. There was people come in nonstop, and nobody ever complained. You know, me and Zoe might have had to leave to go to our other jobs, and then we'd be right back there. It just never ended. But because of this, we're very humbled. We're humbled from our backgrounds that we come from, from single moms to prison terms, from modeling to gun violence victims, from pastors to drug users, from public housing to helping others rebuild their houses. All of these circumstances have made us the people and the team that we are today. We've given more in this last eight weeks than we even knew that we had ourselves. We sacrificed time from our families, our kids, our health, our jobs, and so much more, but we're so honored that we were able to be a part of something so much bigger than ourselves. We're going on our second year of starting this, and what a better way than to celebrate than receiving our official 501(c)(3) last week, like Doug said, effective November 2017. We want to thank everyone that's supported us thus far, and please continue to, because we can't continue on without you all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Doug, you said it was an honor for you to get up in front of this group. Well, it's an honor to have you here, and we very much appreciate the boots on the ground, and I will yield to my colleagues for any other comments.
Well, I was going to ask, so for the audience listening, where can we find you?
213 East Ashley Street.
213, yeah, 213 East Ashley.
Right behind Family Dollars.
Okay.
Yeah, right behind Family Dollars, 213 East Ashley. It used to be the old Samaritan Center, Food, Central Missouri Food Bank Storage Facility. So if you guys are familiar where that location was, we're the exact same building.
And if people have donations, whether now cash, so it's a tax-deductible gift or items to bring?
We are 501(c)(3), so everything can be written off, okay?
And if people have items they want to donate, what?
Right now, we're not taking any clothing items. We are clearing out our clothing so we can start back our open gym for the kids. So we're only doing monetary donations as well as non-perishable food items, and then toiletries, cleaning supplies, things along those natures. So we'll still continue to help out with those type of donations, but we do not have the capacity to have a thrift store anymore, so. Anything, anything within those means, we'll love to take. Donation days are Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Saturdays. Tuesday, Thursdays, 9 to 5, and Saturdays, 10 to 3.
And if somebody wants to volunteer and join the fun?
If you follow our Facebook page, Building Community Bridges, we do have a website. We're going to do a little more tweaking on that before we release that to the public, but Building Community Bridges, and you can send us a message, and we are all the administrators, so one of us will get back to you to let you know when you can come in and volunteer.
And then how many families do you think you're still, that are tornado-related, that you're still serving or visiting on a daily basis?
We have, Wednesdays is our biggest day because we also not only have the free store, but give out the cleaning supplies, food supplies, and toiletries, and we're serving anywhere from 40 to 60 individuals on Wednesdays.
Thank you.
Council Lady Ward?
Thank you. I, too, wanted to say, it's our honor. I wanted to reach out to you guys even before this happened because you're part of my neighborhood, and I heard about the wonderful things you guys were doing with the youth. I'm not sure if you mentioned in your comments that all of your youth activities are free for 16 and under, and there's art classes, dance classes, salon classes, learning how to work a register and count back change. You know, you have a lot of activities where you teach responsibility and respect and being on time, you know, so.
Yes. Our organization's goal is to get the youth and pull out their natural gifts and talents and abilities, and then make sure that there's programming to polish those abilities, so if they're not college-bound, they still have a skill that they're trained in to go out into the world when they turn 18, to become entrepreneurs or people that are productive in society. So we do have a basketball athletic program that's been running out over a year now. We're expanding that program, adding other sports. Lorenzo is our activities director with the athletics program. We have an art class that's bi-weekly. We're expanding that one to be every week and also include younger children under the age of five. We have a dance program that teaches different levels and styles of dance. We have a modeling and fashion department. Our Black Expo will be August 10th, which will have a fashion show, which also showcases small businesses and entrepreneurs and fashion industry. We have an art, I said art, we have a music department that our first classes start in July, and he will be teaching drumline and how to DJ. We have a photography department, but we need an instructor for, so if anyone's interested in photography and wanting to teach their trade to the youth, we do need some people to volunteer for that. I think I've mentioned, have I left out any programs? Art, music, dance, fashion, podcasts, we do have podcasts called Daphne Diaries, which will focus on women and the different issues they have at times or whatever, just open discussion with women, and then also BCB Chronicles, which will focus on the different things going on in the community, and it's a more community-based. the community and it's a more community-based podcast. We also have a community block party once a month. We just had our past one last Friday and we partnered with the VFW who ran a fundraiser for us and they sold barbecue meals. But like Laura was saying, everything that we have is free under the age of 17. So that means that we as a community, well, we as us four, as the leaders of this organization, we step out in the community and we fundraise and we bust our butts to make sure that these children have activities that are safe and at no cost. So it's not putting more of a burden on the low-income families that we're trying to help out and support, but gives them an outlet to have their children do stuff and also rebuild the family circuit by having family-oriented activities. So we do do the block party once a month and thank you to the city for allowing us to block off that street that we're on and allow things, activities. We have bounce houses, we had a dunk tank last time. And so just free activities for the kids and for the family.
And also through these programs, y'all, it also is to make the streets also safer. You know, we want to give back, man. Like I say, you know, I'm from the streets of Detroit, y'all. And Jeff City is a beautiful town. And this, and it may be bad in certain parts, but it ain't still been what I done been through. And I want to give back to stop it from happening. Play my part. If I can help one child, I will be happy. If I can help one family, I will be happy. You know, but I'm sincere about giving back, y'all, because I done been down that road. And the way that the system is signed, just like earlier, Friswater would say, hey, I'm not here to defer, but this is how I feel. You know, the system has something. And I understand how the system works. And if a person get caught up in that system, everybody going to bounce back. Some people get trapped. We lose some good people.
Councilman Huntsman.
Thank you. And I just wanted to thank you all for being here and thank you all for everything you've done for our community, especially over the last couple of months. You four, your organization do amazing work. You are relentless in your mission. And I don't want to speak for Ken and Laura, though I suspect that they might agree, but just seeing everything you all have done over the last couple of months, I think it was all we could do to just try to keep up with you. So thank you again and I look forward to continuing the relationship.
Well, in that spirit, your organization is relatively new. So let's get a photo and then you could share it on your Facebook and promote your, your activities. So I'll come forward.
Also Laura said that we should mention that we are having a fundraiser this Wednesday from 5:00 to 9:00 and it's with bandanas barbecue. So if you guys like barbecue, go out and purchase bandanas and then a portion of your ticket will go towards us. So go out and enjoy some barbecue on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, on a positive note, I think we'll just go ahead and adjourn. No, 7, we have 7B, updated status of Smart 911 and Rave. Captain.
Follow that. Just an update on where we're at with the Smart 911. We have the database all established, set up. There was a lot more in the background than what we initially anticipated. We do have a link on our Facebook, or the PD webpage to allow people to sign up for the Smart 911. They can either go to that or go to smart911.com to set up their profile. On the profile, once you log in and put your name, you can input your family members, household members, any phone numbers that are associated, your kids' phone numbers. And then you can also include additional information. Of course, all this information is 100% voluntary on your behalf, to include your driver's license number, personal characteristics, medical information, allergies, oxygen in your home, which would be beneficial for us to know about in the event of a fire, behavioral cognitive issues, prescription drugs that may be in the house. As far as it goes, the Smart 911 is also utilized by Osage County, Boone County, Cole County, I believe Callaway County, so they can all integrate with one another for the alerts and things. I would caution one thing, when you're, when you're signing up for the alerts, you can uncheck whichever ones you do not wish to get. Horror story on my behalf, when we were establishing this and trying to figure out what to do, we signed ourselves up and I had every box checked from the National Weather Service. And in the event of May 22nd, my phone was just erupting because every time there was an update with anything in our county, I was getting a phone call, an email and a text message. Every time the river went up, went down, tornado watch, tornado warning, tornado emergency, I was getting separate phone calls from that. So you can go back into your profile and alter that if you're starting to get inundated on your cellphones or your email account. As far as the alerts, you can opt in to get them by email, by text, by phone call, all the above, none of, or any of the above. You just check the box. You can pick which phones that the alerts are sent to. When I established my profile, I was going to get the tornado watches and stuff. I allowed my son those, but he didn't need any of the missing endangered persons or any of those other alerts. Like I said, a lot of them are weather-related. There are some for, that we're going to utilize for major traffic events. If there's a crash at 5:00 on the Missouri River Bridge, we can send something out to all those that have the profile set up, along with the missing endangered adults. We're going to have that on there also that we can push that out. You do have to leave your location services on, on your phone. The interesting part with the Smart 911 is it's a national database that's used all over the country. And in researching it, one of the towns that we looked at, Nashville, Tennessee has it. So if I have my phone on and I'm traveling through, I will get all of the alerts, the weather alerts or anything, as I'm traversing through that area, whatever the polygon is that the National Weather Service puts out. So in any of the areas that, around here, basically if you're in Cole, Osage, Boone County, even Callaway County, you will get the alerts for weather and stuff. The Rave Mobility Alerting, that's also a part of this. We have all of our groups set up. It's going to really make the callouts much more efficient. As with the tornado, when we were calling folks out for that, it was literally going down the list and dialing numbers. Now we can send out mass texts, mass alerts, mass groups to all the police department or even the individual specialties that we want. And that's the same, we're partnering, we're partnering this with Cole County. So their Ccert team, their, their hazmat team and all those also have the alerts that we can have sent to them. And it really is going to make it a lot more efficient because it allows you to text yes if you're coming back and then we can get a report firsthand instead of waiting and checking the boxes, waiting for a phone call back. So I have several brochures here on how to set it up. Those are also on the webpage. It's, it's five to 10 minutes and you can get into the weeds as much as you'd like as far as entering the information. It allows you to put really, extremely, you can put garage codes where your key is in your house. You can put your, your dogs' names and where they sleep in the house. I mean, it gets down really into the weeds. The only time we get that information is when the phone number that is registered with that profile calls 911. And it registers whichever communication center or PSAP that you're, in the, whatever area you're in. So if I'm in Nashville and I call 911, they will get all of my information, my license plate number on my car, driver's license number and any of that information also. It's not a searchable database. We can't go in and look up your garage code or anything like that. It only populates our 911 center when the 911 call is made from the device that is registered. And in order to keep the information updated, you're required to get into your profile every six months and update it or just click save again and it will re-update it for another six months. So the, the information that's in that profile stays very current, so.
Great. Any questions, Councilwoman Ward?
What about for those residents, homeowners who have an alarm system and it's the alarm company that calls 911, you know, alerts the officials? Would you see that information that way?
The alarm companies have, that information could be given to the alarm companies. The alarm companies don't call 911. They have a special number that is strictly for alarms that comes into the communication center. It doesn't register with, it doesn't call 911 from the, from the alarm companies. So no, we would not get that unless one of the phone numbers is tied to that.
Any questions? I especially like the idea that it's a county-city thing and it's also shared amongst many other counties, so great. Thank you for the update.
Thank you.
I'll leave you now.
Thanks. Okay, we'll go into announcements by Mayor, Council Staff. First announcement I have under A is the Finance Committee meeting scheduled for next Thursday has been canceled and we'll, we'll have plenty of opportunity to be looking at budgets and financial information. The actual finance packet is actually online and downloadable, so if you have any questions, I'm sure that you can get those answered. Item B, Comprehensive Plan, Community Workshops. Mr. Sanders.
Thank you. A little bit more than a year ago, Council's decision allowed us to hire a planner to help us update our comprehensive plan, which last was, well, originally developed in 1996. We're in full swing of sort of the front-end public involvement. We have three workshops coming up, one at the end of this month, one at the end of August and one in mid-September. We have a flyer out at the counter out here. We have some information on our website. We'd like to invite members of the public, members of community groups, just like Building Community Bridges. We have also been, if you have been invited as a stakeholder, we've been reaching out to community groups, along with elected officials from the city and the county and the state. So we're, this is the public involvement before we take a stab at drafting a draft copy of the comprehensive plan, which we would then seek more public input after we have a draft. You know, this is what we're, we're trying to hear from the community of how they would like to see Jefferson City grow and develop, land uses, housing issues, transportation issues. Pretty much, it's a comprehensive plan. So that first meeting is July 30th at 7:30, excuse me, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Waret Tunnel Community Room at Capital Region. We have three workshops. They're all going to be about the same. There'll be a short presentation and then there'll be an interactive activity, which planning staff will sit down in small groups with the public and anybody else that's interested. If you live, work or play in Jeff City, we'd like to hear from you. If you cannot participate in any of these three workshops, we also have a survey off of our website. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions left? Having served on P&amp;Z like Councilman Fitzwater, that comprehensive plan guide a lot of decisions and votes, so very important to update, keep it updated. Thank you for the work you're doing there. Item C, Historic Preservation Planning Committee. Mr. Sanders, you're still up.
Thank you. That same planner's actually been helping our Neighborhood Services people in the Historic Preservation Commission with their update of the Historic Preservation Plan. We're having a special Historic Preservation Commission meeting July 23rd in this room at 6:00 PM. There's going to be a presentation from our consultants with Heritage Strategy about the draft recommendations of the plan. Planning staff will be there and commission members will be there too for a dialogue after that presentation. We have a 25-page document with a list of recommendations regarding historic preservation in the city. I would invite everybody to read it. It's sort of a quick, quick read for 25 pages. But we're also looking for feedback at that meeting and like with the comprehensive plan, if you're not available to attend the meeting, there's also a survey on our website and there's a flyer out in the hall here too. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions also.
Any questions? I'm going to go ahead and jump Laura Ward for announcement with regard to some awards in the Old Munichburg South Side.
Yes, I was just going to share that Old Munichburg Association has begun a new award, kind of created like the Historic City of Jefferson's Golden Hammer, Hammer Award. This award, however, is a quarterly reward that is given to those in the South Side neighborhood for pride in their buildings, their homes. It's more of an appearance award. And we have participating South Side businesses who are participating and Old Munichburg is providing the winners with a $25 Munichburg Bucks certificate. We had our first one, kickoff one, this Saturday. And it was given to, awarded to Chris Griggs at 708 Washington Street. This structure had had a fire in it, windows broken out, the roof needed to be fixed. He actually couldn't get insurance until he put a new roof on the house. But he has done a wonderful job on the exterior of this home. So Old Munichburg Association just wanted to award him to say thank you. So in a few months, we'll be choosing another one. They could be based on maintenance or yards or Christmas decorations or whatever we decide to do. So when you start seeing that, I don't know, three-foot-tall Datsun dog in people's yards, that's what it's for. He's unique and we just wanted it to be an eye catcher and get people talking and looking. And this award went in conjunction with the Golden Hammer Award. He also received that one, so just wanted to share.
Great. Thank you for what you're doing on the South Side, Old Munichburg area. Next announcement, announcement I have from the mayor, she is having a wonderful time representing our city and our partnership city of Münchburg, Germany. They are very welcoming, welcoming and they have celebrated and were the guest of honor at the, I'll probably, Weissenfest, Weissenfest? I think it's sausage, actually. And have participated in two parades. She's saying this to remind us that next year, they'll have a larger group attending our Partnership City in 2020. So plan on that for next year. And Mayor John Landwehr started this in his tenure. The last item I have is very important. I, I think it deserves special, special note. If you're a disaster survivor of the tornado or flood, this is extremely important. We need it as every citizen, get out the word to, to our citizens. The newspaper, the radio's done a terrific job. And we have here Cory Williams from SBA, who's going to give us a few pieces of information. A good time to really dive into this. This is new to us, fortunately, so welcome.
Thank you so much, Senator Councilman. And again, my name is Cory Williams. I'm a Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. And of course, on Tuesday, July 9th, President Trump declared the state of Missouri for the severe storms, tornadoes and flooding that occurred throughout the state. The governor initially requested 41 counties. Of those, 20 initially were granted for individual assistance through FEMA. So one of the things that whenever there's what they call individual assistance, it opens up what's called the Individuals and Households Programs, which allows for FEMA assistance and also low-interest disaster assistance. assistance and also low-interest disaster assistance loans through the U.S. Small Business Administration's Office of Disaster Assistance. So to give you just a really, really brief overview of the SBA program, because I, you know, I know there'll be a few more representatives that'll speak later on, you know, at other meetings. We offer low-interest disaster assistance loans to businesses of all sizes, up to $2 million, to repair, replace disaster-damaged real estate, machinery, inventory, and equipment. But the big thing I always like to emphasize for Cole County business owners is the need for working capital. And that's through our Economic Injury Disaster Loan Program, where it provides working capital for the business owners to sustain themselves throughout this recovery period. Because, you know, some recovery periods are longer, some are shorter, but the most important aspect for a business owner is to be able to have working capital. One of the startling statistics that I always have to mention is that with, you know, 25% of small businesses that are affected by a major presidential declaration unfortunately fail within the year. So that's a high number and that's why it's so important for businesses to be proactive in looking at their economic injury that they suffer. Because, you know, you can see the windows being blown out, you can see your roof messed up, you can see water in the building, but what you can't see is a drop in sales or if you have a part-time employee that was given, that you were giving 35 hours a week now because the books are a little bit tighter, now you're only able to give them 10 or 15 hours a week. Or even canceled contracts due to other businesses being out of business. Those are signs of economic injury that we try to make sure to let people know that it's not just the things that you can see, it's those things, the economic injury, things that you cannot see. So we're actually going to have a business recovery center that's going to open at Lincoln University's Small Business Development Center. It will open this Wednesday, July 17th at 9:00 AM. And that location is 917 Leslie Boulevard. Again, it's 917 Leslie Boulevard and the center will be open Monday through Friday from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM. So there will be professionals there that can answer any questions that you may have. But just a couple of different differences between traditional SBA versus Office of Disaster Assistance. So with traditional SBA, all the loans are actually funded by banks, but they're guaranteed by SBA. So with our Office of Disaster Assistance, all of our loans are directly funded by the U.S. Treasury. As a result, there are no banking fees, there's no cost to apply, there are no closing costs, and loan payment terms are up to 30 years. It's a five-month infirmal, all of our loans, and there are no prepayment penalties. And we also offer home loans, up to $200,000 to repair, replace disaster-damaged real estate, and up to $40,000 to repair, replace disaster-damaged personal property, which would also include any vehicles that were damaged as well. And the home loan interest rate is low as 2.063%. Again, no closing costs, no cost to apply, no prepayment penalties, and long terms up to 30 years. And same for renters. Renters can borrow up to $40,000. And then our nonprofits can borrow up to $2 million. And similar to businesses, there is a fixed interest rate at the 2.75%. But the thing that I emphasize, especially for nonprofits, when you think about different events that may have been canceled, like, you know, that brings revenue to those nonprofits. I mean, it could be, you know, faith-based organizations that have, or even like, you know, some of these, I think they have the nonprofit here. They may have events that end up being canceled. And that creates an economic injury, it's something you can't see, but it's an economic injury to that nonprofit. So, you know, the first step, again, we always encourage anybody to do in the process that's in impact is to register with FEMA. And that's to go to www.disasterassistance.gov or the 800 number, which is 800-621-3362, or they can download the FEMA mobile app. But once they actually register with FEMA, they most likely will receive a referral to SBA. So with that, I wanted to keep it brief. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak and I'll open up for any questions you all may have.
Good. The critical thing, the clock is ticking.
Yes, the deadline is September 9th for any physical damage. And the deadline, if any businesses or nonprofits sustain just economic injury alone, that is a nine-month deadline. But the thing, we really encourage businesses, because of the startling statistic, start to go ahead and get the, you know, go ahead and apply early. So even if you don't even take out the loan, you know it's already been approved and it's in place, so you can take the funds out as needed. So the one thing we always find with economic injury is people will wait till the eighth month and, you know, on the nine-month deadline. So we want business owners to really be proactive and that's why we have that business recovery center open.
Okay, the number one more time for everybody?
The number, so for customer service for SBA is going to be 800-659-2955. Now, again, the first step for FEMA, registering with FEMA, is going to be 800-621-3362 or disasterassistance.gov.
And that information is also on the city's website?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is item nine, Lincoln University Update. We have Carolyn Jarrell. Hi.
Thank you, Council. I was sitting here and it occurred to me, it's been two months of summer and school is about to start and I'm really not ready for school to start. However, just a reminder to the community, on Wednesday, basically for the rest of the week, starting from Wednesday, it's going to be really hot, so people stay hydrated and stay cool. Try to drink as much water as you can. And also, we would like to appreciate FEMA as well as your organization for partnering up with Lincoln University to help the Jefferson City community. It always excites me each and every time because Lincoln is Jefferson City's home university and so anything that we can do to help in any way, shape, form, and or fashion, we're more than willing to. Thank you.
Thank you, Carolyn. Next item is item 10. We don't have anybody signed up, so move on to 11, the Consent agenda. I'll need a motion and a second to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion passes. Item 12, Bill's introduced. Item 2019-033, Mr. Bane.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri vacating and discontinuing a portion of the Lewis and Clark Drive right away.
Oh, Mr. Bane.
Thank you. Yes, what this bill would do is would vacate the public right away on what is most of Lewis and Clark Drive. And so that's the road that basically connects from Eastland past the middle school and back down to Eastland Drive again. And so since all that property is actually controlled by the school district and it ultimately became part of the agreement that was signed with the council's agreement to fund the construction of Cavalier Drive in front of the new high school, to vacate this portion of Lewis and Clark. And so basically that's what the bill does, except for a very small portion down at the very end where there's a house that has a driveway off of the roadway, the rest of it would be vacated.
Any questions? Seeing none, moving on to item 2019, pass 034.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with HDR Incorporated in the amount of $79,115 for the Missouri River Bank stabilization project.
Mr. Bane.
Yes, we have, our sewer division has a 30-inch diameter sanitary sewer line that just north or upstream, so west, I guess, of Ware's Creek is becoming exposed, the riverbank is being eroded. And so this contract would allow us to get engineering done to stabilize that bank and protect it against future erosion and ultimately protect that sewer line.
Any questions? Okay, seeing none. Item C, 2019-035.
Amending the FY 2018-2019 budget by reclassifying one Parks Maintenance Crew Leader position to a Program Manager position within the Parks and Recreation Department.
Mr. Spalding.
Thank you. We felt like with the growth of our membership, especially at the Link, 437 units in June of 2018 has grown to 857 units in June of 2019. The need for a membership director, we feel like is imperative. So with a recent resignation, we felt like it would be a great time to reclassify a Park Maintenance Crew Leader position to a Program Manager Membership Director.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, seeing none. We'll move on to item 13, bills pending. We have bills 025 and 026 taken up earlier. Moving on to 2019-027, clerk, would you read?
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by the addition of parking time restrictions on Clark Avenue in front of 1015 East Atchison Street.
Mr. Bane.
Yes, so this bill were to be passed would set up a time restriction for about 75 feet of roadway adjacent to the community building at the corner of Clark and Atchison Street. I believe that they have some issues with cars being parked there all day, which kind of interferes with some of the programming that they have. So initiating a time-limited area in front of their building, they believe, will help them in serving the clients who use the community building.
Any questions? Seeing none, prepared for roll call, please.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kenner.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item 2019-028.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 Motor Vehicles and Traffic by modifying parking restrictions in the 700 block of Madison Street.
Yes, so this bill, much like the previous one, would have instated two-hour parking in the 700 block of Madison Street is Welcome Inn, again, used to be on the corner, and so this would be just to the south of that. There's two-hour parking along a portion of that street already, and this would just be extending that two-hour parking restriction through the next building, which would have been the old furniture store.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Kenner.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kenner.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Motion passes. Item 2019-029.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 by adding a stop sign to River Bluff Court before entering Hazelton Drive.
Yes, so this, as the title says, we would be looking at installing a stop sign before entering Hazelton Drive from River Bluff Court. River Bluff Court is the new street that was built several years ago in conjunction with that new subdivision. Currently, there aren't any houses on that street yet, but I think they wanted to get in front of that and have a stop sign installed. And so it wouldn't be untypical to have a stop sign in such a location.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kenner.
Aye.
Motion passes. Now, 2019-030.
In ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 by modifying the no-parking area on the south side of South Ten Mile Drive east of Missouri Boulevard.
Mr. Bane.
Yes, so this is the area that's by the McDonald's, the old Oshlin store, which is now becoming the Texas Roadhouse area. Essentially, the road is about 31 feet wide, which is narrow, and given the increased traffic that we believe is going to be in that area due to the new development, it seems appropriate for this street to only have parking on one side. And so there was a request to remove the parking on the south side. There's actually intermittent no parking on that side already, and so this would just have no parking for the full length of that street from 179 to Missouri Boulevard.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Prather.
Aye.
Schreiber.
Aye.
Ward.
Aye.
Wiseman.
Aye.
Fitzwater.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Hensley.
Aye.
Hussy.
Aye.
Kenner.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Motion passes. We've taken up item 032 earlier. Nothing on the infirmal, nothing on resolutions. 16, Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics. Seeing none, we'll go to 17, 18, 19. Council Lady Wiseman.
I move to adjourn.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stand adjourned.